Good evening. I would like to call on the regular meeting of the Planning Commission to order. Today's date is October 4, 2023, and the time is 6:40. Ron Con, Plan Commissioner Cliff, Ron Con, please.
Certainly, Commissioner Anderson is absent. Commissioner Power also absent. Commissioner Wolbert?
Here.
Vice Chair Hamadi?
Here.
Chair Bowie?
Here.
Let the record show that three commissioners are present. We have a quorum.
Yes. Now, we will have the Vice Chair, Mr. Arlin Hamet, to lead us in the flag salute.
Please hold your hand over your heart after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Now, we go to item number three, report from the Planning Secretary regarding the late communications.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have no late communications tonight.
Okay, thank you. Item number four, expati communications. This section is intended to allow all officials the opportunity to review the disclosure regarding site visits or expati communications about the public hearing and regular business items. So since we only have a report tonight, there are none. Let's move to item number three, special presentation.
There are no special presentations.
Okay. Now, item number six, oral communication. Planning Commissioner, do we have any? Please read the procedure into the record.
Chair Bowie, I would be happy to read the procedure into the record, but as you can see, there are no members of the public currently in attendance, and I have no speaker cards, so I believe that would be a moot point at this point.
All right. So let's move to item seven. Let's approve the minutes of last meeting.
There are no minutes present this evening. Unfortunately, I didn't have time to complete them, so there'll be a dual set of minutes on a future meeting.
Okay, thank you. And item number eight, public hearings.
There are no public hearings this evening, Chair Bowie.
Okay, thank you. Item number nine, regular business.
And we have no regular business this evening.
Now, go to item number 10, reports. I see we have a report. Do we?
We do. Item 10.1 on the agenda.
Yes.
Chair Bowie and members of the commission, it's my pleasure to introduce you to Scott Porter with the City Attorney's Office.
Yeah, welcome. Please. So, good evening. As he indicated, I'm one of the attorneys that represents the city, and I've got a presentation to summarize the myriad housing bills that have been adopted in this last session. So I don't know if you can see the PowerPoint presentation that I have got.
Deputy City Attorney Porter, it's just a matter that the crew in the back have to switch it for us, so we're just waiting a moment while they do that. Yeah. You'll see it on the screens that are showing on the wall once it's ready. There we go. Thank you.
Okay, so this is what I'm hoping to cover would be new housing laws. When I talk about this, understand that most of these bills that I'm going to refer to have been enrolled, meaning they have not yet been signed by the governor. But I would expect that if a housing bill goes before this governor, that this governor will sign it. It is not a guarantee, certainly. He has been known to veto things in the past, but that is a rare instance. So there are, I've identified 61 housing-related bills. I'm not going to be covering all 61. I'm going to be focusing on the bills that I think are the most relevant to Westminster. So with that said, here are a number of bills. There are many, many bills. So the process for a bill to become a law, the legislature approves it, the bill is enrolled. The governor will have 30 days to decide whether to sign. So typically, most of these bills were adopted a couple weeks ago, so they might not get signed for another few weeks. So certainly mid to late October, we'll know for sure whether these bills will actually become good law. And the overwhelming number of these bills will become effective on January 1 of next year. Some of these bills are already in effect. Some already were adopted in July and were emergency legislation, so they're effective right now. They are covered in this presentation. So why am I telling you this? So what you can do as Planning Commission members is you can always ask for more information. We can come back with more information about future study sessions. If there's some particular area, maybe I don't want to explain the full analysis publicly. I could certainly provide confidential information. And ultimately, the Planning Commission is the commission that has the ability to recommend legislation to the city council. So if you believe that zoning amendments are in order, that would be within your purview to say, hey, staff, could you come back with something directed, you know, whatever that direction may be. You can say, come back in a future meeting with more information on X, and then we can talk about that in depth. That's certainly not the purpose of today per se, to debate things not on the agenda. Rather, this is more of an overview. But if you would like more information, certainly bring that up, and we'd be more than happy to provide you that information. So there, I've categorized these in a half dozen categories. So there are a number of bills relating to what essentially reducing the city's zoning powers. We have to approve certain types of projects relating to generally affordable housing. One flavor of them is SB 4, which is a bill relating to religious and institutional housing. So the bill was enrolled in September 13. The bill would expire in 10 years. I guess that's, sorry, 2036. And essentially, it says that if you have land that is owned by an independent institution of higher education, think a college, or a religious institution, a church, a mosque, a housing, so if they are proposing a housing development project, in other words, more than one house, so if they're building multiple units and with no more than 50% retail, then the city must approve that use by right, which means that we would not be doing compliance with the California Environmental Quality Act, because anything that is mandated to be approved, why even study it in the first place? Doesn't matter what the analysis says. We have to approve it. So that's how CPO works. So and then there must also be a number of other requirements. It can't be on a prohibited parcel, things like it can't be on an earthquake zone, it can't be flood zone, things like this. It can't be near an industrial or oil, gas, or polluted land. The developer is required to pay prevailing wages, in other words, what I'll call union rates, which are typically a little bit higher than standard rates. The project, so and then projects exceeding 50 units actually have to hire, it doesn't technically say you have to hire a union, but the only people that have the ability to do those things in reality are unions.
I have a question. And you stated right now that land owned by a church, let's say.
Yes.
If the land, let's say, two acres, and the building by itself, maybe 10,000 square feet, so they have a lot of extra land, did I love to build on it right away?
So there is language in the bill that talks about how you can't exceed the previously approved footprint. So I'm not sure exactly what that means. I'd have to relook at the law, but my recollection, I think the idea was repurpose existing buildings. You're allowed to build on this space, so if it's within the approved space, like setbacks and whatever, then it's okay, but you couldn't like approach into setbacks, etc. So I don't remember all the specifics, but if you'd like more information on it, I could certainly find out, but if that's good enough for now, then we'll just leave it there.
That's good enough for now.
Okay. And then also, there's limitations on the ability of the city to prevent a bill. So the project cannot exceed more than one story above the exist, what would otherwise be the maximum in that area. There's different rules depending on whether it's in a commercial zone or whether it's in a residential zone. So questions on that?
Is this only for high density, or is it for low income, or is it just general construction?
It has to, I believe, I apologize if I'm going to be saying a lot of things of "I believe", because there are 61 bills, and I have not memorized every single bill. But my recollection is that it hinges on the definition of a housing development project, and that's from an existing statute, which I am aware of, and that existing statute essentially says that it has to be five, well, it has to, in general, it's five units or more that would be constructed. Not always true, but that's the general rule.
And so it doesn't matter if it's a below-market development, an at-market development, a high-luxury development, where, I mean, there's no stipulations on the type of development.
I believe it does have to be, some portion of it does need to be affordable. I don't recall what the thresholds are.
Okay.
And with all these, again, I apologize. Normally, when I come and make a presentation, I would like to know absolutely everything. I had to digest about hundreds of pages in a week of dense legal text. I haven't memorized it all yet. So SB 684, ministerial subdivisions. This has potential for a lot, there's a lot of potential significance on this one. So this was enrolled September 19, 2023. It requires ministerial approvals. That means automatically the city must approve it, no discretion. So the city must approve certain subdivisions or 10 or fewer parcels for a housing development project, which are essentially high-density housing development projects. It's, so it exempts certain minimum parcel sizes, so this is in a, I believe it's in multifamily areas. So if it's a multifamily project in a dense area, then we have to approve up to 10 units, essentially. So and the city has to act on the application within 60 days, and if the city is denying it, then the city essentially has to provide a list of all comments on the application within 60 days. Okay. AB 821, general plan inconsistency. So here is a problem, and the legislature is trying to solve the problem. Here's, the problem is this. A city adopts a housing element. You recently had to update your housing element, part of the general plan, and there's a cycle, and we just completed our housing. Where are we in the process? Did we adopt the housing element? Is it approved? Okay, good. Sorry, done. So the Department of Housing and Community Development, HCD, HCD typically has 90 days to send comments back to the city. Well, they said, and from the city's perspective, it's like, tick-tock, you're giving us these deadlines, like, and now we have to wait a quarter of a year to get comments back to you, which ends up delaying the whole process. So number one is, oh, actually, sorry, I'm referring to a different bill. But there is a new law that we'll get to in a minute where they say that 90-day period is a 60-day period. This is, sorry, this is a different bill. This bill says, when you adopt a housing element, sometimes what ends up happening is you've amended the general plan, but the city hasn't yet gotten around to changing the zoning. So the housing element now says 30 dwelling units per acre, but the underlying zoning says 20 dwelling units per acre, for example. So what is supposed to happen in the meantime? Well, the answer is, if somebody comes in and says, well, I want to build 30 dwelling units per acre, the city says, well, wait a minute. We haven't yet adopted new zoning regulations. We have 180 days to solve that problem. If we don't solve that problem within that timeframe, sorry, it's going to get approved at the 30 dwelling units per acre. So this says it's 180 days to amend it. So there would be, if there's substantial evidence supporting the finding of consistency, then projects would have to be approved. There's exceptions, but that's generally how that works. AB 1287, increased density. So one of the questions that has sometimes come up is, well, back in the day, we would tell everybody, look, the general plan is supposed to be general. It shouldn't be specific. That's the reason. It's a general plan. So then you would have ranges in the general plan that would say things like, well, in this portion of the city, it should be between 30 dwelling units per acre and 60 dwelling units per acre. And then the zoning might say, well, in this portion of that, it might be 30, and in this portion of that, it's 45, and in this portion of it, it's 60. Well, this is saying, actually, it's the greatest range. So it's really, in that example, the 30 to 60, it's really the 60. So the range is really not a range. So that, and then also, so that's what that means. And then density bonus, any, let's see. Oh, so we can ask applicants to essentially prove that they're allowed to get a density bonus. And then also increases permitted incentives and concessions for specified low-income projects. AB 1308, single-family remodels. It limits the amount of required parking. It also, if you don't have to provide parking, it makes housing cheaper because now that parking space can be housing. That's the general thought process behind these. So you'll you'll notice this, those sorts of things in all of these bills sprinkled throughout. So there are tenant protections. So there's a new bill, AB twelve eighteen, essentially says that increases tenant protections for demolition projects. So if it, so you have an existing law that says tenant protections exist where you've got an existing housing on the site. A tenant lives there, you're going to demolish the site, you need to protect the right of that of those tenants. You need to help them move potentially, or you need to find them replacement housing in specified circumstances. This would say, number one, is it expands those protections to five years. And it says, well, when do you need to rebuild it? Sometimes what would happen is, well, it might take a very long time to rebuild. You know, you're kicked out of your property and then meanwhile, you have to wait until that type of housing is the last housing that's built on the project. No, actually, the moment you start building, you need to start building that replacement housing. And then it expands the the scope of right of first refusal. So the tenant has the right to move in and then also authorizes HCD to notify the attorney general of violations. You're going to see a number of bills that authorize HCD to enforce the new laws. Not really a surprise. Okay. Streamlined affordable housing processes. This may not affect you as much, but this will affect staff substantially. Because all of these relate to how do we process applications? This is one of the things that I was referring to. Now HCD has sixty days instead of ninety days. So hopefully there won't be as much delay in the housing element process as there was in the last year. We had at one point, I don't remember what the deadline, on the day of the deadline, something like sixty percent of cities had not had an approved housing element by the deadline. And in many ways, that was because HCD dragged their feet and cities dragged their feet. So together it ended up substantially delaying the process. And then also adds HCD authority to enforce a number of laws relating to accessory dwelling units, ADUs, JADUs. SB nine, they previously didn't technically have authority over SB nine. Recall that was the single family. So that law says, if you've got a single family house, you can actually build a second single family unit on the exact same parcel. Oh, and don't forget, you can always build up to two ADUs. So in any single family zone, anywhere in California, you can build four units on one single family lot. HCD has the enforcement authority over that. And then over these new bills, assuming they they get adopted as as before, the religious institutional uses. And then the AB twelve eighteen and AB six eighty four, which I previously discussed. Another bill relating to post entitlement processing. So after they get an entitlement, after they come to the planning commission and say, hey, planning commission, I want to build X. Or after staff approved their planning application, then you have the post entitlement application process. That's actually getting your building permit, building the thing. So net previously existing law says, when you come to the city, we need to have a list of here are the thirty eight things that you need to give to us to have a complete application. Well, we're saying, well, that also needs to be on the post entitlement end of things. So when you come in for a building permit, you need to have a list of here are all the things that you're going to that you need to do. And it includes all permits required by the Building Standards Code, including any discretionary permits. So that's like basically, how do I get a building permit? Tells you how to get a building permit. City cannot require appeals if the city has determined that they submitted all information for person to evade permit issuance. So.
I don't, I don't mean to cut you off, but I have a question.
I'm sorry?
I don't mean to cut you off. I have a question.
Yes.
You just stated right now that on a single family home, you can build four units? Would that be in R four zone?
Correct.
And when did that happen?
That was twenty twenty one? SB nine, I believe, was twenty twenty one.
So you're not required to subdivide the the property to have a dual single and then dual ADU?
Correct. So you can, so there's two sets of laws. So one set of laws is the ADU laws. Those existed before SB nine.
Correct.
Okay. And those say you can build one ADU and one JADU on a lot. Okay, we already, so that means you could already get three.
Three.
Okay. But the new law says, well, you can get a second primary unit. So now that you have two units on the same lot, and if you build them connected to each other, now you have a multifamily dwelling structure under state law. Now, if they're separate, they're not, it's not a multifamily dwelling structure. So but if you put them together, it's a multifamily dwelling structure. And state ADU law says, if you have a multifamily dwelling structure on the lot, you can get up to two detached ADUs.
Wow. So that's four.
Four.
And all that depends on the size of the lot too, right?
Correct. In reality, SB nine has not been a monumental shift. Because most people don't have enough space to build four units. Most people at most have space for maybe an ADU. So you did ask a question about splitting the lot. SB nine says you don't have to do a lot split, but you can do a lot split. If you do, but no matter what, you only get four units.
There will be two parcels though.
Right, but now you have two parcels and you'd have two on one of the parcels and two on the other parcel for a total of four. You can't like split the both and now I have eight. That doesn't work.
If you do a subdivision and you have two parcels, it means you have to pay two separate property taxes, right?
Correct.
Okay.
They're separate.
Got it now, okay.
But don't forget, you don't have to provide parking for anyone. So you can build four units with zero parking spaces.
Wow.
Usually, nine times out of ten. There are exceptions.
No, I'm I'm happy with the information now. Very happy.
So I I don't know. How many ADUs have we had in the last couple of years?
We crank out about a hundred and eighty.
I think three hundred.
A hundred and fifty a year roughly?
So far, three hundred, I think, so far, three hundred.
And my guess is almost none of them are SB nines.
No, no, we haven't had a single SB nine.
No SB nine, okay.
We haven't had any SB nines. Okay, and that is consistent with what I've experienced in other client cities as well. It's very uncommon to have SB nine.
Okay, so right now there's no need for parking, like I said, no need for parking at all? If you add additional units?
Sometimes parking is required.
Okay.
It often is not. It depends on the size of the ADU. It also depends on how close it is to mass transit.
Correct. Mass transit's the usually the deciding factor from what I understand.
Yes. So most of the city is within fifteen minutes of mass transit?
Especially.
All right, sorry, within half a mile of mass transit. So it's if you're within half a mile of mass transit as defined.
I think where more than.
The ADU laws came in under SB thirty five, correct?
Are we, are we half mile or?
That was unreal, it it's, there's been a whole slate of ADU laws?
I think within, we are within a mile, not half a mile.
So it it's been a drip, drip, drip for many years.
We are within half, one mile, not half a mile.
Well, the radius, the radius is a half mile.
Right, it's half a mile from, so it's a mile wide, but it's a half a mile from what's in the middle.
Yeah, from wherever that, wherever that transit stop is, is defined as fifteen minutes or less of headway for two lines.
I see.
When you say mass transit, that is a kind of bus route?
Correct. So for eighty, yeah, it's a really complicated question. For ADU purposes, the mass transit is essentially muscle.
Yeah.
Excuse me, Chair Louis, can you turn on your microphone? That last comment, can you repeat it? Because it won't be on the minutes, it won't be on the record.
Yes.
Just for, just for the record, if you can repeat your question.
Yes, the question is, is the mass transit considered, bus route is considered mass transit?
Yes. So for purposes of ADU law calculation of do you have to provide a parking space? The answer is yes, buses count. So there are other laws where it doesn't count. So and or they have to be, I could get into it, but there's a lot of different rules depending on what you're using it for.
Okay.
SB four twenty three is streamlined housing approvals. So if the state owns the land, they have the option to say, oh, this multifamily housing project is consistent with all of your objective design standards that you already had in place. We've decided that they're consistent, so you city have to approve it. It's always been the law that we have to approve it if it is consistent, but we were the ones deciding that. And my guess is that the state was saying, eh, well, at least it's our land, we can decide how it's going to be developed. I'm guessing that's part of the thinking. Now, also, one of the things that has changed is now staff will be the decision maker for whether a project complies with objective planning standards. Sometimes staff was put in awkward situation of going to the planning commission or going to the city council saying, by law, you are required to approve this project because it's consistent with all the objective design standards. And then planning commissioners and city council members are saying, then why am I here? And the answer is, well, actually, you're not going to be deciding that anymore. So so also, and then minor tweaks along those lines. And that makes sense because why would you go to the planning commission or the city council and say, you have to approve this thing? And you don't have discretion, it's it's a mandate. There are minor exceptions, but most of the time there's not a lot of wiggle room there.
A quick question.
Yes.
As you know very well, that when they approved the ADU, they approved this on certain square feet to be built, eight hundred square feet maximum, right? Does this still exist or is it changed to higher number, twelve hundred or fifteen hundred square feet? Or or can you do a townhome design?
I don't know what, I don't recall our specific ordinance.
Yeah, the current ordinance, of course, with the, if we're talking about economy developments, subdivision approval and the ordinance requires commission approval for any type of tentative map. So that part would come to the planning commission unless it's exempted by these new laws.
Correct.
The map portion.
But the size of the, size of the ADU now, is it twelve hundred or still eight hundred?
Yeah, twelve hundred, we have to approve those by right.
Okay.
On the property.
And what about the height, like townhomes, tell three story, a garage, second, first floor, second floor?
Did we do it to the state maximums or did we do something different? Okay. Okay. So the city, so the city's ordinance talks about that, but it sounds like we're going to be amending that potentially.
Okay.
Yeah.
Now you, real quick too, you also mentioned a key phrase, objective standards. Who's still in control of these objective standards? Is it the city that determines what they are or is now California deciding what every city's objective standards are?
Thankfully, we get to decide what those objective standards are. So we can, we can say, X, Y, and Z, your unit needs to be, you know, your awning cannot exceed more than one foot, your windows cannot be larger than eight square feet. Whatever, whatever numbers and mathematical equations we wish to put into our code and into our standards, we have the authority to establish what those are. But and and the thought is, we tell people, look, you can build this. And then they come in quickly and they say, okay, I'm allowed to build this? Look, I'm proposing to build this, check, done. As opposed to, oh, well, maybe we'll approve it and maybe we won't. The idea is streamline the process. It reduces your discretion, so you're having fewer and fewer projects coming to you because you have fewer, yep, the city is losing discretion.
I I would just add to that, that the city has begun the process of drafting objective design standards. Last, this past summer and spring, we did have a consultant prepare some objective design standards for us. Those are going to be rolled into the next part of the zoning code update. So in the future, what will come before the commission, ultimately the council, is part B of what we call the zoning code update. And included in that will be objective design standards. So the commissioner will have an opportunity to weigh in and determine if those objective design standards are appropriate or not.
So I'll skip over the rest of these. So AB fourteen ninety, this is adaptive reuse. The state is wanting to encourage changing over a project. So if you've got an existing structure that hypothetically used to be a church and now is you want to convert it to some other use. Hey, let's turn the church into housing. Great, you don't have to demolish a building, great, turn it into housing. And then this streamlines adaptive reuse projects with a hundred percent affordability, of which fifty percent have to be very low. So you can have fifty percent low, fifty percent very low. In other words, a hundred percent of the people there, it's a hundred percent affordable housing. Also, it's not on an industrial site or immediately adjacent to an industrial site. But we can still have objective design standards, like it has to be at least ten feet setback. It can't be more than, you know, X number of feet high, things like that. And then that last statement is it's easier to get grant funds. So our grant fund processes need to allow reuse of projects. So enforcement, I've talked about this, essentially HCD, the state is turning the screws, wanting to be able to enforce laws. So for example, for AB fourteen eighty five says that HCD and the attorney general have the ability to intervene in any action addressing a violation of specified housing laws. For example, they can weigh in and sue a city if they're dragging their feet on whatever it may be. Also, as previously described above, AB four thirty four includes expanded enforcement on any number of different laws previously mentioned. SEQA, the California Environmental Quality Act. The short summary of this is it is making litigation challenging. The environmental impacts on affordable housing projects is substantially more difficult. And it reduces the environmental review for those types of projects. So AB fourteen forty nine, it exempts certain affordable apartment projects. So it exempts from SEQA the following actions to allow for a hundred percent affordable housing projects. If they meet specified labor standards such as entitlements, if the city is buying or selling the land, if the city is granting financial assistance for the affordable housing project, or if they're doing a rezoning or a specific plan or a general plan to allow for this a hundred percent affordable housing project. So if we change our general plan to say, hey, we're we're going to allow a hundred, you know, thirty five units of affordable housing to be built right there, then you can't be sued under SEQA. AB sixteen thirty three, so existing law already prohibits cities from disapproving specified housing development projects. And then it also expands this definition to essentially say, the city can no, can't be tricky and just fail to actually act on SEQA purposes. So now you can't just say, oh, well, we can't approve it because we haven't done the SEQA. And they're like, so, oh darn, we can't approve the project, sorry, that game doesn't work anymore. Now you can't, now you actually, that's not a defense. SB ninety one, it, if somebody is proposing to amend, to convert a motel or a hotel or a residential hotel or a hostel to supportive housing, essentially housing for homeless people, then that is exempt from SEQA. Additionally, footnote is there's special legislation within this for Los Angeles County Rapid Transit projects. You don't have to do an EIR for environmental leadership transit projects. In other words, this project is going, is state of the art, super environmentally friendly. So you can't sue under SEQA challenging that that is going to cause environmental impacts. So that will make it easier, more likely for projects, for mass transit projects in LA County to move forward. SB four, four one hundred forty nine, it changes the rules that only lawyers care about, so I'll just skip over this. Basically, it makes it a little bit easier for a city to fight environmental SEQA cases. Like one of the games that people play relates to who should be preparing the record. And then also you can invent, you can exempt environmental leadership projects, again, super great projects. Why should, you know, they're environmentally spectacular, so we shouldn't be suing for those projects. And then also it streamlines the challenges to projects generally. A court needs to act within two hundred and seventy days, whereas before it might be longer. But courts are totally backed up. So these numbers are spectacular, but call me a cynic of whether these numbers will be met. I think that they'll be likely to be met, but it just means that everything else will get pushed back. So there are various revisions to the ADU laws. I wouldn't say any of them are huge, these are more changes at the edges. So this one removes the ability of a city to require an ADU owner, to require. uh, to require an owner to live on the property, um, to be able to have an ADU. So now you can have the absentee landlord that says, hey, I'm renting out both my home and my ADU, and that's okay. AB ten thirty-three, it allows cities, but does not require cities to allow ADUs to be separately conveyed, essentially as condominiums. AB six seventy-one says that if the state is paying for the construction of the ADU, then they need to be able to sell it independently. Well, if you take state money, it comes with state strings. And one of them is that it can be sold, but it has to be initially sold and occupied by a lower income household and subject to a recorded covenant, which essentially guarantees that it be for affordable housing. AB thirteen thirty-two, this requires the city to create a process whereby the city has pre-approved plans for ADUs. I believe we already have something to that extent, don't we?
Yes, we have, uh, we're nearly completed with what we call the standard plans. And those will be pre-approved ADUs. We expect they'll roll out later this year.
So if you build exactly what has been pre-approved, then you have a streamlined process. Um, funding for infrastructure. So this is the last one I'm going to talk about. On a future, on a ballot coming to, uh, let's see, on a ballot coming to you in the future. There's a way to make that an advertising, anyway. So filed with Secretary of State on September twentieth, there is going to be, uh, a vote going to the people. Essentially, it would amend the rules to make it easier to, for local governments to approve property tax increases or sales tax increases to essentially support, um, construction of affordable housing and/or infrastructure. So public infrastructure, housing, things along those lines. So thresholds are usually, well, don't need to get into too many of the details. Also requires special districts. So that would be like water districts or, uh, not school boards. I'm trying to think of other examples of special districts. Oh, um.
Sewer.
Sewer, who, who does their trash, the solid waste?
Oh, yes, yes.
I mean, there's a special district here. I forget what.
We have a sanitation.
The sanitation district. So that's a perfect example. Sanitation district is a special district. That they would have to also obtain fifty-five percent photo approval for issuing bonds. So that will be coming to a future ballot. There are any number of additional bills. I've got them listed here if we really care, but as you can see, there are many. See, I'm not even going to talk about those. Questions?
So those bills are impending or has been approved yet?
So most of these bills are, have not been signed by the governor. I believe most of the bills will be signed, but we do not know for sure. So in a month, ask me and I can tell you for certain whether these bills will be signed by the governor. But I think that they will.
Some of the, I have question regarding the motel convert to
Yes.
high density. Does it need a special calculation of the load of people to live in that and comply with the current codes of building codes? Because most of the motel are very old. They use the old codes of, uh, construction. And when they convert, will the building, the apartment, uh, change and request them to comply to current new codes?
Correct, because these, these laws pertain to land use. But, uh, building codes are a, a, a kind of a separate jurisdiction, if you want to say, of, of authority. And those are health and safety regulations. So they'd have to comply with all those things, you know, fire, fire codes, plumbing codes, building codes, electrical codes, all, all those sorts of things. Whereas what we're talking about tonight are just the land use restrictions that planners and planning commissions and others in our realm of the development process deal with. But they would certainly, if you convert a hotel or hotel separate from whatever we can talk about here tonight, there is the building code process and they have to still comply with all that.
Right. So SB ninety-one essentially means that the city, number one, would not need to conduct environmental review prior to approving the conversion. You wouldn't need to do an EIR, an environmental impact report. You wouldn't need to do a negative declaration. So that saves a lot of money for the applicant because an EIR can cost, you know, six figures very easily. So I've, I've seen some EIRs be tens of millions of dollars. Probably not for a motel conversion, but, um, so they, that can be very expensive and it can be a significant time delay. So number one is it avoids having to do their environmental review. Number two is it avoids there being a lawsuit claiming that you did improper environmental review. So again, it makes it easier to convert those units to housing.
Tony, real quick, were you talking about the AB fourteen ninety, the adaptive reuse of the motels? That's only specifically for, uh, crisis individuals or homeless or something like that, right?
Correct.
Yeah, so it's not like re-converting it to sell it?
It needs to be for supportive housing.
Supportive housing, yes.
And well, right, so there is one that would be, we, it'd be changing any unit to supportive housing. So I, I, I hypothetically said an old church, it could be an old warehouse. It could be, you've got an old warehouse and you say, let's convert this warehouse into supportive housing. As long as it's not industrial, then that could happen.
As long as you're not in the M one zone. M one, M two, that's heavy duty.
I don't remember how they define what is industrial. Whether it, is it zoned industrial or is it actually physically have to? If, if, if a normal human walked up to this and they would say, there's industrial things happening here as opposed to what the zoning is. I believe it's.
I think they go by the zone.
I don't think it's how it's zoned. I, I, I'm speculating.
Yeah.
I've read other bills and it's not related to what it's zoned. It's related to what is physically there.
Yeah. Usually M one, M two is industrial zone.
Right, so that, that would be certainly the areas where it would be most likely to be industrial.
Yeah.
Well, an example would be like a rundown hotel here in the city that's not doing a lot of business. They decide to sell to the state or whatever they want to do. That way the state can come in and create affordable housing or not affordable housing, but supportive housing even. And the next thing you know, an old broken down motel might have a hundred beds of homeless people living in it, in whatever neighborhood. There's no qualifications. There's no, the city can't say anything about it. It's going through.
So a lot of things would go through. My guess is it's usually a lack of funding. So a lot, these things take a long time and a lot of funding and a lot of people will really care about it to make it happen. In my experience, you get those sort of projects only if the city is behind it, in my experience.
Yeah.
Because cities can't enforce their laws unless there's sufficient how, um, there's sufficient housing for homeless folks. So cities have a real desire quite often to make sure that there is sufficient housing because they want to be able to enforce their quality of life requirements. Okay. Well, thank you.
Thank you for your report. And do we have any question, more questions?
I'm good.
Yes.
I got all the questions I want.
Now let's go to item number ten point one. Pending housing legislation twenty twenty-three.
Chair Bowie, that's what we just covered. We covered that item, yes.
Okay. So this is the one that we already cover on. In the future, if we need more information, would like to invite you to share to us and to the public. And item eleven, matter to the staff. Are there any announcement for the staff?
Yes, thank you, Chair Bowie. I first of all wanted to thank Scott for his great presentation and all the work he did to prepare this. We did, we did ask him, um, last week and he did a great job of giving all the information and, and, um, he always does a great job and we really appreciate it. Thank you, Scott. And also Alice. Alice was key to this. And I want to especially thank Shelley. I know everybody is aware that, um, this is Shelley's, uh, last meeting with us. And, um, I wanted for the record to let everyone know what a great job over the years Shelley has done. She's just such a professional person and really knows so much about the planning process, about, um, meetings. She is, um, been a wonderful asset to the city and we're going to miss her very much. So, um, we wanted to, we wanted to just let her know that. And, uh, finally, I'd like to thank the commissioners for being here tonight and always, um, doing the part that you do, which is to make tough decisions for the community. Thank you.
Now, item twelve, matters upon the planning commissions, including AB one, two, three, four. Do any commissioners, anything that you would like to share with, on?
I do on behalf of Commissioner Power, who's not here tonight.
Oh, okay.
Can I do that right now, Tony?
Yes, of course. Like to.
So as everybody knows, Commissioner Power's not here, but he wanted me to read or one of us to read a statement in and I liked to do that. So I'll be speaking on his behalf. Unfortunately, due to a work conflict, I, Commissioner Power, am unable to attend tonight's meeting. But I'd like to ask my fellow commissioners to adjourn tonight's meeting in the memory of Jordan Brandman. Jordan previously served as a trustee on the Anaheim Union High School District, uh, board and as an Anaheim City Council member. Jordan was a passionate and dedicated public servant who fought tirelessly for the residents of Anaheim. Most importantly, he was my friend. I will always remember Jordan for his kindness, his intellect and his political acumen. At forty-three years old, he's gone far, far too soon. Thank you, Jordan, for your friendship and public service. You will be missed by many, but you will not be forgotten.
Thank you. Well, would you like to have nothing after this? So we would like to adjourn the meeting.
I want to say, I want to say something.
Okay, please.
Thank you. Uh, I just want to say, uh, bye to Shelley. It was a nice party. I'm glad you invited us to come and join you and say bye to you. You'll be missed for sure. And who's going to be your replacement?
Uh, the city, to my knowledge, has no replacement at this moment. But someone will sit here. We're just not, we're not sure who. The actual position, um, was posted on the website, but then taken down for some amendments or something. So they're going to repost the position. My understanding is I'll be working remotely to help the city up until they hire my replacement and then, uh, likely onboard that person a little bit so that they can, uh, do the other things that I do besides planning commission.
Wish you the best.
Thank you so much.
Yes. Shelley, thank you for your effort to help all of us here for the past, uh, many years' service for our city.
Thank you.
Best wish to you on your new road of success.
Thank you so much.
Yeah. So now I would like to adjourn the meeting, uh, at seven thirty, twenty-nine. The next regular meeting of the planning commission will be on Wednesday, October eighteen, twenty twenty-three, at six thirty. Thank you very much.
Uh, Chair Bowie, I, I'm not sure if you wish to comply with Commissioner Power's request.
Yes.
You were, I, I believe you were going to adjourn in the name of, uh, Mr. Brandman?
Yes. I would like to adjourn in memory of, um, our friend.
Jordan Brandon.
Jordan Brandon. He's really good, uh, contribution to all of us. Thank you, Jordan. Best wish to you on your, uh, spiritual road. Thank you. So we are adjourned the meeting now.
Thank you.